You don't have a failed report card. So when they have a passing report card, would you have to tell them that that's a requirement?
We.
Or what do you think?
We vote with all the health department, you know, if it's not the one critical factor, their recommendation will be passed. So we, I would recommend that we follow their recommendation.
Could we, I don't know what the other board members think, but if it was possible, could we say as soon as that report card comes down at the following Monday? Or that we would, or do we have to meet again to eliminate the requirement?
No, we don't have to meet to eliminate the requirements. I mean, we're, we're following the recommendation of the health department by just recommending that people wear masks. If they're not vaccinated, that's the recommendation of the health department, which they're fairly critical. They're not requiring, they're not mandated, so we can.
Right, we voted to.
Right, we, we voted to, so we can take it away whenever we want.
The data would show in Buckeye Valley or County, I think we only have one field, critical factor, and that'd be the hospital.
Right, if, if, if we looked at just Buckeye Valley as a district and not the entire county, we would be passing and we would be able to move it. Everybody would be comfortable.
Could you go back to the anyway, back out of the rescue?
Yes, we're at, I think, thirty cases per hundred thousand, we're at thirty-eight cases per hundred thousand. But the benchmark for the critical factors is fifty student cases per hundred thousand.
I struggle a little bit, is that normal in house and maybe quarantine more? And should we let that settle in for a couple of weeks and just.
Liar.
And then, and then, given the mandate of those numbers still standing, pulling up both mandates at once might be, you know, if, if there would be spread, we wouldn't know in process. So, but we have to retreat on both this quarantine guideline and mask again, as opposed to waiting another week or two and just, you know, making sure the numbers stay low. I want, I want the students, I really do, but.
Right, well, i- it's, it's my opinion that the reason that they have allowed this new guideline is they are not seeing any real spread in schools. The spread that is, that you're seeing in schools is coming from close family contacts and inside, you know, households. So if, if you have two kids, you know, in the same building or in different buildings getting it, and they're from the same family, it's because that's how it's spreading. It's not spreading because, you know, Johnny and Suzie are sitting beside each other at lunch, and they're eating lunch, and they're, they're removing their mask, and they're taking a bite, and they're putting their mask back on. Well, then, shoot, that's just not happening. So, again, I, I think that the public health district being overly cautious, which is their job, I get it. But they're allowing this because they're not seeing that spread in schools. So if we're not seeing the spread in school, then, you know, masks being the, the option of the parents to put them on or not put them on, is, is really what, you know, where I'm at and have been. But, you know, I leave that up to the rest of the board. If you want to keep the masks on, just to keep the masks on, it doesn't make sense.
I just think, I know, I personally know someone that fed walnut to their son who got it at high school when they were on, you know, when they didn't have the mask mandate. So I do think, there are cases, but since they're wearing masks, so it's hard to know, you know, it's hard to know if we knew the mandate as well, it's still not clear. But we're so close to the number, you know, the common number, seeing whether they need to be, as well, right, for the first, no, where does the number seem, whether they need to be hampered. I think I'd, I'd rather make it September.
November third, after the election.
Thanks.
From all your little friends vote for you.
I, I, I think that we're at a point where I can support going ahead and, and giving students choice. The, the problem is, it's really student choice. I, I know with the bandy about parent choice, but, but, you know, I also understand from my experience in schools that it's more peer pressure than it is parents. And I'm not going to put our teachers in a situation where they have to decide who has to wear a mask and who doesn't, because that's what the parent wants. And, and so I think, you know, it, it's either everybody wears them, so it can be enforced, or then they can wear them voluntarily. If, if a student doesn't feel comfortable wanting to wear a mask, that's fine. I, I'm basing my assessment at this point on the fact that we don't have the cases at night, and we're not requiring masks there.
If, if they add sports, like, what's that, athletics is the prime place that would be contagious.
They have all. And I'm still looking at zero, right? I mean, it's not like these athletes aren't going to school, right?
Right.
And even if they were deemed a close contact and not exhibit symptoms, they'd still be able to go to school, as long as they wore a mask while they were at school. They would no longer be able to participate in the athletic effects or, or contests they're, they're in. And I believe it also says they, they can participate in band or wire because.
Let's say, let's say from social distance.
So.
I haven't gotten to the part where you explain it, I had to get some people.
I've read.
But I, you, you know, it, it's really hard for me at least to, and there is a part of me that says, do we have these low numbers because of masks? Or, and, and when I look at the high school, I, I have the question. And, and the other thing is, is, you know, I'm hesitant because our five or three eleven-year-olds can't get vaccinated. But that sounds like that, that may be happening soon, and if we can get through until they can, and then they have a choice to, you know, do that, protect themselves, or their parents decide that for them at that point, I guess. Then, I, I'd be lying if I didn't say I was nervous, but I don't, I don't think I would oppose it. So, that's where I come from.
If they'll talk about it some more, or.
I'm in the same place that Randy is. I think our community, the, the numbers in the schools are actually much lower than our community.
Yes.
We're like point, point oh, point oh oh four percent. And the community right now, active cases in our zip codes are, I hear you guys haven't heard about, but between point, approximately point two percent. Point one five to point two five. So there's much lower cases in schools than in the community at large, our community. And I've heard, you know, I know we've heard speakers tonight say that we had this overwhelming, passionate request not to mask. I've tallied the emails that I've gotten, I'm pretty much both ways. You know, I've got parents both ways, about fifty to fifty, passionate one way or the other.
That's why four people at the open house had masks.
But I think the data shows that there's a very low level in the community right now, a lower level in the, in the school. Maybe because of masking. But at the high school, there's nothing, right?
Right, now, Mr. Baker, so you're on your high school, we have no mask mandate. Do you have kids wearing masks of their own?
Uh, there's single digits of kids, I can probably count them one day.
What?
I mean, a single, a single-digit percentage.
But if they want to wear a mask, they're wearing a mask and they're not really, they're not getting teased or anything, or?
It's always fifty to fifty according to her.
This is exactly, they've had an opportunity.
Well, I, I, I understand, I, I agree, it's, you know, we're not telling anybody that can't wear a mask, it's, if we say, if we remove a mandate, you know, we're not telling parents, hey, if you want to send your kid with a mask, please do so. So would the, I think the recommendation be to follow the recommendation of the health department, so they recommend.
Masks.
We, we would recommend masks, we, we won't, wouldn't mandate, if they, if they come back, because they still have, you know, if, if there were to be an outbreak of some significance, the health department, if we don't do it beforehand, the health department can come in and say, hey, y'all gotta wear masks. So.
So we didn't have on this agenda that we could have a revolution.
Uh, we can add it if we want. You know, but, you know, we, you know, we're seeing all this, we're seeing this data, and this, this, and one of the things that I thought was really critical was now the quarantine guidelines are, hey, you can come to school, you can learn, you just have to wear a mask if you're close contact. So that, that's a critical piece of information.
He's campaigning.
So. Yeah.
Oh. You know, and it, I mean, that's not all or none, but at the same time, that, that's an identifiable group, and hopefully it'll be small.
It's, yeah, and that's, and that's a rule of law, actually, because that's, that's enforceable by the health department, you know. We would be the ones, or the staff would be the ones enforcing it in the school. But if they're breaking that rule, they're, they're breaking the law with the health department.
By law, we would have to send them home.
We would have to send them home, right, we'd have, you know, so. So anyways, that is just a.
I've always said with masks, and. Helping them with these types of stuff. Yeah, I've always, always believed that it's, it's up to the parent to wear the mask. And they're called, I'm glad to see the numbers are coming down. My only hesitancy, the dancing in the streets, we've got holiday season coming up in about thirty days.
Right.
So we go back to the old cycle of, of the parents going to family events, and then having your Thanksgiving and Christmas, but we'll see what it is, and we. Don't control it.
I don't think we saw a huge spike last year with the holidays. We deal with a little bit enough, they, they weren't much. I, I think, I think the bigger spike really came in with the, with the winter sports, basketball, and, you know, all the quarantine. And, and it was, it wasn't really cases, it was quarantines, and that's what hurt, was the number of quarantines.
We'll look at that, that's the quarantine.
Eight cases and a hundred and ten quarantines.
Yeah, so, so all hundred and ten of those, now, they still would be sitting out the sports, that sport, we'd still lose that team, basically, but they'd be able to come to school.
Right.
As I say, I mean, our core business.
And that's our business, is, is again, so that's really the.
Yeah, I agree. It's laws that grow kids who want their health.
So, you know, given this data, I, I would really like to ask for the board's, the rest of the board's opinion in a, in a vote as to whether we continue the mask mandate or not. So, can we add that in there?
You, you can make it, um, we would have to change the agenda, we need to make another discussion out of this.
Yeah, well, just do it, we can do it as a discussion, so think about it while we go through the rest of the agenda. And then we, we can put it in on discussion items in six, when we get there, please. All right.
Any questions on the essential student school exemption before I?
Yeah, what, explain the sports.
Um, sports, so kids come to school, if they wear a mask, have to wear a mask under today, except for eating and drinking. If they're going to visit or using or band, they can do that, if they can ensure the six-foot social distance, they can't, six-foot social distance, they can't just pay in, um, visit, band, or music, or whatever.
So you come up to bed and practice and be, like, off that side.
But athletic contests with, in practices, we could ensure the social distance.
And the, the active case is still not quarantined at home?
Isolated at home.
Isolated at home. And then, do we have any legal, is there any ramifications for the kids or the parents, families that have exemptions? I mean, that they, their kids were not allowed to wear a mask, so.
If they have an exemption and they choose not to wear a mask, they have to quarantine at home. If they're having mask exemption, would like to take advantage of the essential student school exemption, they have to wear a mask regardless of their mask exemption, so.
They have to remove their exemption request?
No.
Or like, what, what's?
It is stable.
We call them, and if they accept this exemption, they have to agree to be the bullet points there. We send this home in an email and, and send home with the kids, and get it twice, but they have to agree that they do not have to remove their, their exemption. Because once their fourteen days is up, they can go back to their religious exemption, but, and, and they don't have to come to school, they don't, they can quarantine at home as per, per law. There'd be no penalty at school for that, they just have the opportunity to wear a mask before ten days and, and quarantine. But if we remove the mandate, that's a new issue.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, I'm hoping that we don't see a spike again, but there might very well be another variant throughout, you know, until the younger kids have an opportunity to be vaccinated.
And the health department says they reserve invite the three-foot distance exemption at any time, so it, it, that's why I'm sure the department will set in, pull this exemption from us, and then we have to get back to the normal quarantine isolation procedure. Although I think it did seem, you know, saying that there'll be, you know, five or four-year-old opportunities for that next month.
And then the quarantines that we have right now, is that all in one classroom? Is it going to be an issue in the classroom to quarantine in classroom? I heard before we could accommodate two or three or four per class.
There's maybe some other departments other than the testing industry.
So no limit, well, that is a huge.
Correct.
That doesn't become.
Get him a vacation too.
She did, she went to a different public school.
And right now.
No, I didn't buy side, I should have bought side.
And right now, with sixty students at home, they need to quarantine at home.
That's correct.
But they know their identity.
I guess that's a, a good point. What we are, what we have noticed, the data shows that household contacts, if mom has it, typically brother and sister gets it. So this exemption does allow those students to come to school, but we, as a district, have decided with the nurses to recommend that they stay home until the cases, until the isolation period is over. So if I had it, the nurse would call me and say, if you're something, you're allowed to, man's allowed to be at school, however, we recommend they stay home for ten days while you're still contagious. And then we would recommend bringing them in during their quarantine time, because technically their quarantine time would not start until fourteen days, or till ten days after a class is structured. So those are probably the household contacts that have a tough stage. We do have a couple true isolation cases under the, whoever is in the basement or something, the students that's here and there, they're in, that, that means all the, the states are housing. Any other questions on the exemption?
I got you, Jeremy.
We'll do that when we get there.
Justin, we have three point two, this is the initial guidelines regarding the new Buckeye Valley graduations, and this is from Adam Dean, Brian.
See? Come on down.
I didn't, I was just, I was like, I'm wearing her. And she got married.
Now, this flows into a first reading of a policy update during the agenda as well. By coincidence, it works out in the line. Yeah, the policy happened, the focus world came together for my topic.
Hey, good evening, everybody, evening, Board of Education, so, uh, there's a handout there, and, um, we've worked a lot this year on looking at the new graduation requirements for students for this year and then also next year and beyond. So, um, this is just a quick overview of what seals are. Bottom line is, it gives our kids a little more flexibility for their graduation requirements versus what's been done in the past, and it's a little bit less emphasis on standardized testing. We want to complement, I believe, the state on looking at the whole student, which is kind of aligned with our strategic plan.
So here is Mr. President.
Thank you. So the State Department of Education has changed some requirements for graduation. On the left is this year's class of seniors, everything changes, juniors and low. So currently, Buckeye Valley requires twenty-one credits to graduate, and the state requires twenty, we require twenty-one. And they have to have credits in the certain categories that are listed on the left. The only change to the credit requirement, which is, I think, currently being signed into law, is that the state is adding a required half a credit in financial literacy, which we already offer a financial literacy class, but now it will be required for everyone to take. And it will not be part of our social studies curriculum, which we have, which we do, it will be a separate standalone elective class. Same twenty-one credits total to graduate, so it didn't change.
So it won't be elective, will it?
Yeah.
It will, well, it's, it's an elective, but it's required, just like the R and E, those are electives, but they are graduation requirements.
Well, we're not taking in the graduation in total, correct?
The total, correct, it's still his twenty-one. Again, on the left, for this year's seniors, the requirement is that they take seven end-of-course exams, and they earn at least eighteen points based on their scores on those exams. Most of our students meet that criteria on, on their exams. If they don't, the state already had a little bit of flexibility, worked in there for students who could earn industry credentials, work keys, or basically test out if they got a high A B C T R S E score. Juniors and beyond, they are going to need to end, to earn ten grade English course. And they have set that score, the cut score, for what is competent or not competent. So students will take those tests, they get a competence score, they're good, if they take the test and they don't get a competence score, we do some intervention, they take the test again, they have some chances to do that. If they are unable to get that competence score, again, they can do, earn industry credentials, they can also show that they have, that they are actively enlisted in the military, that will meet that criteria for them. Or they can earn a C or higher in a college credit plus English or math course to meet that criteria. So again, it's just a little bit more flexibility, we're still showing academic incompetency, but it's not as test-heavy. The biggest change is, for class twenty twenty-three and beyond, is they will also need to earn two diploma seals. The state has set criteria for all of the seals listed on the left there, and then they said local seals, we get to determine what those, the criteria are for those three local seals on the right. So if you look at the last page of your handout, it's a, a pretty basic description of what a student needs to do for each of those state-identified seals, as well as what we believe they should do for our local seals. They do have to earn at least one state seal, so they cannot just do student engagement and fine arts. They have to do one of the state seals, but then they can also do a local seal to show their, their readiness to go out into the world and be successful.
How many, about how many kids could we have that are the seal now?
We don't do seals now.
That would happen for two years.
It's an option, but most, our kids don't do it, don't use it. For example, we do, um, one of the state seals is an honor supplema seal. We have students earning honor supplemas every graduation class. We haven't used this graduation criteria yet. We also, I mean, we have, the college-ready seal is based on A C P and N C P scores, so we have students who are already meeting that criteria, we have students who get the seal of high literacy already. So a lot of these seals, we're already addressing, we just haven't said, here, you have to get one of these seals.
Can you kind of make it other for some graduates, or is it in line with?
I think this will make it, it gives a lot of alternatives for students. I've only been at the high school for two years doing this, the points can be a big stumbling block. Test for students, yes, who either don't test well, they, you know, for whatever reason, they're not earning those points, and it's like, well, what are your options? Well, you can do a lot of extra work and get this work keys credential, but it, it was very test-heavy, you know, one test, one day, that kind of thing. So I think, I don't necessarily think these are going to be easier, because these are going to be four-year, you have to earn, do things all four years to earn these seals. So they're going to start looking at it earlier and say, which two seals am I wanting to earn, what do I need to do to get there? But I think this gives a lot more flexibility for students who may not do so well on tests.
How many points can they get on a single test at this point for this year's seniors?
For this year's seniors, they can get five points on a single test. Three is considered proficient.
Right, okay, I got it.
You two are thinking that you would offer those deeper topics, what can they buy by?
I don't, because, as I said, a lot of the, a lot of our students are already doing things that would earn them state seals. We, yeah, we have to check the box and say, you, you have, you know, documented that you earned an honor supplema, you know, now you get a seal.
I just want to add to that real quick and just say that one of our goals is that we want to be able to sit down with students when they're younger, even upper middle school, we're a lot with that. So they're going through pathways with their counselors and reflect on it every year, so that we make sure that they're on track, and that they choose the pathway that they like and the seal that fits with that. But for the older kids right now, we should make, have an effect, but for the younger kids, we'd be more intentional.
Do we know yet, if this is, I mean, if this is something that you have to plan for four years, that's planning for that year? I didn't do it. Yeah, I thought it was. Okay.
I mean, if somebody decided that the decision of their senior year, that they wanted to earn the community service seal, they could do that. They would just have to, they would have to work at it and use their weekends and their evenings. But, you know, there's still, our students are still going to be taking the seven end-of-course exams, and if they're good test takers, they can earn the science seal by getting a certain score on the science exam, or the citizenship seal by the, getting a certain score on the government and history exam. So we're already doing a lot of these things, we just have them labeled on the seals.
But this will affect current juniors and lower.
Yes.
It will affect what life would say they, because we're going to long the social with the seal.
Is this something colleges or employers will have, that a lot of people have state seals, or do you think it's totally new?
I think it's totally new, so I'm not sure that, that the employers know about it that much. We've already, like, the industry credential seal, and there's an Ohio Youth Jobs seal, when we partner with the A C C, many of the students, they're, they haven't gotten the seals yet, but they have earned those industry credentials, and so. And so that goes into their portfolio when they go out, you know, into the work world. So a little bit of that, I think employers know. I don't, the colleges, they look, we've done the honor diplomas for several years. The colleges look at that. Typically, our seniors are accepted to college before they get their seals or their honor diploma, so it's, it's nice. But I don't think that they are using it as like a mission's criteria.
Do we have a program for Ohio News Jobs earnings at this point, or Ohio News Jobs? I know that some of the other districts in the county do.
We, the program that we have is the partnership with that.
It's solely through that?
Yes.
We don't have anything?
The piece of it that we have in-house is our, our C D I program works directly with Ohio News Jobs and they work on those things. Many of those students who are in our C D I program then are going to be.
Okay.
Career-based instruction.
They do have an engineering program.
Okay. I have one question, on the, this class of twenty-twenty, go back one slide. There we go, the bottom?
Yes.
So before they had to get a remuneration pre-score on A C T or F A T, and now they have one, they go, they're alternate now. Instead of that is a college credit plus.
Yes.
So they've eliminated any A C T or S A T as a showing?
It goes, it goes into the college-ready seal.
It's on the seal.
Yeah.
It's on the seal.
It's on the seal.
But it's not an alternate requirement for graduate competence.
Right.
Longer.
Correct.
So that would be one of the seals, if you're a great test taker.
And typically, the students, this is a generalization. Typically, the students who earn the really high A C T and N C T scores have met their points.
Cool.
All right, any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And board the, the policy, the first reading took a consent agenda. I'll send it to, to one of the, both of you. Okay, so we've got, I've, you know, kind of, it is a test, it is a test.
It's a test, so that's what it is. Yeah, it's the formatting, I said that, it's not what it looks like. I just want to say, so, oh, the laws expected to be signed in, uh, in a day to make the financial literacy the requirement. And this happened to be on the agenda. And I think the high school team and I all agree, and I know the civil office, that that's an important course to have making out. The first is not will be proactive in the, and so we can start the, the clerketing for that. Thank you very much.
I'm wondering, before we begin final reading of the policy next month, are there any resources that were going to be staff-wise, for financial literacy or counselor-wise to help kids land their four years?
So, so yeah, I was going to say, just one thing with all these seals that does sort of go along with the strategic plan with, and multiple pathways for students. The school counselors and I have already begun discussing how we're having those conversations with students and how we're tracking it. So currently, Na'viance is a program that we have that helps with the college improvement in this piece. There's a new program out there that we're actually having a demo with a representative next month that seems to do a little bit better job with the detailed work of tracking these seals. So it might be taking a look at a different software that'll track that earlier in the middle school. And we're also working, not just with this, but with our A P courses and C C P courses. Looking at different pathways, tracks that students may want to be on and starting to have those conversations on the middle school level. You know, where do you sort of see yourself? We having pathways that you have to change if you're changing your mind and so that families are well-educated on, you know, if I want to be at this point in my senior year, I need to start thinking about this in seventh grade.
Right.
One thing Na'viance did have is they have a list of scholarships. So, same, they have scholarship information.
There is a bank of scholarships, that, and there's other programs and opportunities for that.
Yeah, just looking at different software, just so that feature is still available, that information is still available.
Absolutely.
I guess I should also say, best wishes, because I just got this image in my head and all these checklists that the Chinese scholars are not going to be, everybody's got two. Now wait a minute, not this one, get a minute. You know, so, yeah.
Yes.
Anything else?
I have a digital set.
Nothing else, then let's move on to the financial items. I need a motion for, for point one here.
I move to Buckeye Valley Board, let's case and approve the tax financial report that were recommendation of this ratio.
That would be the second?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Multi-arculation, as with high dollar, next month, I did month. So just, you need to penetrate this and finalize this decade from now and the future so that we can, next month, we'll have a forecast for the year.
Any questions?
The September insurance, it was, is that what insurance does that?
Health insurance. I mean, that's medical.
What?
Medical, that's for medicine insurance. And that is, it was pretty much a tiny issue, it just didn't leave the, they, they had my books in, in the base.
Yeah, it's a big chunk of money.
Yep. It's, yeah, it's all of our, up here or whatever.
Graphs, and we report on graphs. Very visual.
I've been working, got that one.
Yeah.
It's working.
It's about time we got her trained. Any other questions? Okay, if not, roll call.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn, yeah, it's Audrey, yeah. Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. White.
Okay, on the new business, I need a motion for five point one, please.
I move to approve the consent items, five point two to five point one three. Is that presented?
I give a second, please.
I'll hit the highlights. The supplementals, the amended, is people have already been through the, since they have voted on, they've given us some that shows they have more years experience or whatever. So we've gone back to the minimum contract. We have a new, down there, department heads mentors, most of our sports, we're, we're a program. We have three volunteer, Philip Feld, Shipp, and Chris, and athletes, the new club here. High school students stipend, that's, it was online content there. We have our B P T A people, that's also district, so it goes through for us. Did you get an appointment this time for personal labor and being the local secretary? Classified subs, so we have three there, the bus drivers. Believe that, but one and then one person that's on the employment is also on the resignation. So, do that save you? A donation. Kelly talked to you guys about the equal purchases, you know, so we think of that. She didn't talk about that all, she came on, I think it's a graduation program, it's a, I don't even, I just went over.
And that's.
And that is, that is the something, Kelly couldn't, I know her tune with this, and I had, but that's not something that we're saying we want to do, we have no choice.
Something responding to the process.
Ultimately, they double and makes that decision, um, both other or not, they'll take it.
It's my understanding, really, that I was in it.
It's my understanding that they are not going to pass a resolution to take movies for education and let parcel land transfer.
Like, it's a word, it's also impressive, but, sorry. Good thing to worry about.
So that's a purpose consent agenda.
I just have one question about the bus drivers. And we read and see signs and hear about the shortage, are we experiencing that issue here as well?
We are now, yes, so we have, we're shooting, and then the resignation. Recently, we had two bodies down, I believe, three drivers, now three bus drivers in. We don't have a lot of stuff to worry about. As soon as we can, get out there and do that, as you guys all see, we can be able to mine it.
Are you even on the offer, and I just heard, heard from the name about, um, some sort of, sort of, very popular funding, um, using that to draw them?
We have, I'm sorry, we have a pretty, pretty good incentive program we put in place, I would say, a year and a half ago, and that, that did us well. We were in better shape, we are in better shape than the neighboring districts, so I'm not going to cry too much over it. But I just met with drivers, probably this week, they're, they're all running together, I believe it was yesterday, on another incentive that they're taking to, to their members to vote on to, to vote up to some of the drivers. But yes, we, we are trying to, um, work with incentives and organize a, something in regards. It's very difficult, we sort of like, we don't.
And then they have to go through that, and you could totally solve it.
It's a, you know, work tomorrow.
And you've got work tomorrow with no experience.
We, we reverse for the C P L training, don't we?
We do, but they have to pass, and so that's, it's a, it's not a guarantee.
So it's out of their pocket until they pass and then it'll be reimbursed.
It's very bad.
If it's not a sustainable model, increasing salaries for, for people, put, you know, somebody's got to buy it, right?
I might summarize it, when people are here, we're in perfect shape. But the best result also, that lies.
When everybody is here, we cover all.
We're down, so we're drivers, and we're really good.
Any other questions on consent agenda?
I just, the uniforms. That, that was something that the boosters were proposing, Kylie, I think you emailed about this. And I'm grateful that the boosters purchased or helped with the cost of that. So what's going to be the cost that we're going to add into the general fund expenditures now?
Uh, about sixty-two dollars a year.
By year? And that covers all teams?
Correct, so the, um, uniform again, four-year cycle. So not every year the same team, team is getting a uniform. Except for football, it would be two years. Football, every two years, but if they get home jerseys and a weight jersey, so it's not exact, it's not exactly.
Same year, right?
Correct, like, and, correct. So like, they don't get home and away the same year. They'll do home two, the two are two away.
And this doesn't support our clubs, just our sports, because we have sports clubs, and then we have.
This is board approved.
These are board approved, um, as a, as a department, um, teams, teams, yes. Correct, seventy-two.
Yeah, clubs have always been basically a parent.
So the cheerleading is the team, but what about like the, sorry, I'm out of time, but what about the, that's a black hole, do we purchase those uniforms?
I agree, I agree.
What do you have in mind?
Those are banned, and parents pay to apply for uniforms. Parents have to pay, always show a party uniforms too. Unless the boosters vote. Unless you apply for, I don't know, you know, pay for every single minute of the competition. At this time, the resolution is on the college.
Yeah, you should, you have to, yeah. Okay, any other?
I think it's a good thing, um, just in general, I think that's something that the district should be buying. This will be informed, um, that they're going to compete in. It follows up, basically, the, the boosters should be buying the extra things that programs are acting for, and we should just basically put the required for, so that.
Yeah, I agree. But all the other local districts are, they take the uniform, you know, not safe.
Yes.
So boosters should help pay for those non-essential things that contribute to athletic and activities. Anything else? Any other questions, comments, uh, not roll calls?
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn, yes, Mrs. Audrey? And Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, uh, six discussion items, and we, I believe we're going to put a resolution vote in, vote on here for following the guidelines of the health department, which recommendations, the recommendations, the recommendations of the health department is currently a resolution. Do you, you all type up and have something to read?
I'm, I'm just going to be as simple as possible, I have no second recommendation. Masking, that's what it is, but it's, well, okay, and campus is, a recommendation.
So I need a motion, uh, for this resolution.
And start date, sorry.
And a start date, let's see, a start date. But the recommendation, the resolution would be to follow the recommendations of the Delaware Public Health Department.
Which required?
Which we are required, but we would follow their recommendations and, including masking recommendations in the worst activities, uh, take three well. So, yeah, that's a motion.
We need to add that also, please, the change in quarantine?
Um, we have to, because that's, we, in that kind of change, in, really, that's a role at school, some new kid, you know, but that's.
That's all the health department, we don't control quarantine, but we are, we have opted in to this essential school, to school exemption.
I, just the way that you're saying that, to follow the recommendation. So before in September, the board, not as a whole, that the majority of us voted to include that, to go beyond the recommendation, to follow a mandate. And, and we did that looking at the data in our community, and now we're looking at the data in our community specifically, um.
So the resolution could be to remove the mask mandate?
Yeah.
You know, if, if that's the one.
Because we're actually, I mean.
So we're, because we are following, so we can make it really simple.
Our, we prefer that we continue with the mandate.
I'm sure they do, but.
We're just rescinding that, that sort of resolution.
Right.
Which is actually even easy, even easier than it's higher. Yeah.
Okay.
We are considering our.
We're not defending it.
Well, you've already typed all that.
We're considering level three will not.
We can just reset the resolution for September one.
Okay.
Twenty-one. Or maybe about masking.
Okay. So I need a motion to rescind that resolution.
I'm going to, that we would send the resolution that was passed on September first, two thousand twenty-one.
Can I give a second?
Second.
And a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Is that great? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes. Who's the active date on that, the seventh?
The active date is today.
September first is the.
Because we're.
Yeah, that was the. Did she look into that, we reconfirmed what we did on? Did she look into that we reconfirmed what we did on the date? It was, I think, three days in school that we didn't mask any data. So maybe we should.
Now take your eyes off.
Go back.
This is obviously.
Right. September first will be there. September first, we have continued it, so.
Yeah, that's a same resolution.
It was a same, it's a solid, it's a, sorry.
So, uh, like, resolution period, okay.
Should, should we say so about on safety versus discussion?
So the number one was the ACT.
The same resolution, we can take it.
So you're rescinding the original, suddenly you're rescinding.
We're rescinding the last one, which was the original one, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, any other discussion items for the board? Um, I, I think one of them, we had a, that I wanted to bring up, and we talked about it a little last night, was uh, having another work session with respect to uh, BD West fifth grade move potential. Or what we're gonna do at BD West with the additional uh, students and how we're gonna make space for that. So, um, is, does anybody have?
I guess. Chairman and I are meeting with the role one person, we're meeting to review on this. Sure, what is it, Monday? Monday. And then we'll, if it'll be okay, you guys can talk about some dates we can get together between now and the next meeting, that'd be good. So, um, talk, see what, what works for.
Yeah, you're in the hot first.
Come, yeah, we'll have a role one person, just.
Okay.
That, that's the.
And we definitely like.
Like, we, here's what, what's written in the report, is a lot of people see when they're driving or.
Right, and, and I would, I would like to be able to have the report in one hand and, you know, if somebody drives me around and I can look and see that, you know.
Right.
It, it looks real.
And you guys can, we can email all three things. Um, and I can also ask the questions. And I can, and her, her fans, and she'll be very fun.
Um, and, yeah, I mean, one of the big questions is to get that, the better breakdown, uh, what's it gonna cost us? It probably makes sense. It probably really makes sense.
I should be able to put a price tag on these options, we would consider. We're able to definitely pull, but it makes no sense just to talk about one or the other. Unless you know what it's gonna cost us.
Absolutely.
I mean, so you guys, let me have that meeting Monday, I'll get potential dates. So now, if you guys, um, ask for what works for date five, any questions you have. And we'll get Tracy up here for it, yeah.
I have one question. I don't know if the, this data would be available before the meeting or if it's required. So we talked at the special meeting last night about describing the difference of opportunities at the middle school for the graders versus at the elementary school. And polling parents to find out which ones would open in the hole in the middle pool by choice. And I don't know if that is critical enough to try to act on before we have another special meeting. Okay, I'll leave it to you.
I wonder if you can do a license reading of this one, get the report needed.
Okay.
So that, I mean, you'd be calling the fourth grade students.
Right, third or fourth?
Third or fourth, so, I mean, it wouldn't be an instant on the task. So, yeah, I mean, just let's know, you can frequently do. Before the meeting and then we'll, we need more data, we need, we need more data. Anything else with, uh, the board? You guys.
We do have an executive session. Yes.
Okay. And we'll have the addition of all the comments, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, then I need a motion for executive session, please.
Was, was the elimination of the mask mandate start tomorrow?
Yes, okay.
I think that we got it, we're starting for, or if we want to be one of the people to be the one, the one that's evaluated and the colors.
Second. You. Roll call.
All right, Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes, Mrs. Audrey?
Yes.
And Turner?
Yes.
Yes.